Had to try it. Didn't have to eat it, I could do it.
I believe you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us for the November meeting of the Mount Jewett Borough Council. As always, we will open our meetings with any comments from the public.
I have a comment from somebody that asked the question of why August and September's meetings were not on Facebook page?
I do not know.
I didn't remove them. They were on there the last time I looked.
I don't know.
I even looked today and they're not there.
I don't know. I'll check and see.
Oh, so we'll be able to put them back?
I don't know. It depends on why they're not there. If they're gone, like something happened on Facebook, I don't know that we can recover them.
Well, it's just strange because we have April, May, June, July, August and September is missing, October is there.
I don't know. It's recorded on Facebook and then it's there.
Conflicting month when we were discussing.
Well, nothing was removed.
Sometimes the settings for live videos are like thirty days after you get recorded, they can delete them.
You have to make that choice.
Yeah, I don't think we've done that.
Maybe we were hacked.
Maybe you were hacked. It's possible.
I didn't remove anything.
I know for a fact nothing was removed, so we can look into seeing maybe try and.
But I have it on a hard drive, so they're saved on a hard drive for our own records.
Okay.
So if I have to, I can probably pull them off there and put them back on.
We'll upload it, yeah. Okay.
Did you refer them to your wife's page? She has them too, doesn't she?
She probably does.
Okay, just whatever.
But, you know, the whole object of having it is so to compute.
Time's still technical difficulties. We'll figure it out. Anyone else from the public? Jim?
A couple things.
We don't know why they were removed. Oh, sir. Oh, sorry.
Just go ahead, Jim. Ignore him.
Yeah, okay. Sort of like reaction there. First question was, is there any update on your new cell phone tower down by the sewer pipe? I've had a couple people ask me and I said, well, I'm coming to meet tonight and I'd ask.
Last I heard from the last summer meeting was there was no update unless you know more than I do.
Yeah. Still working on some paperwork issues. Hopefully that's all taken care of. All the deployment testing has been done and come back well. Was told it might not be till next year as in twenty twenty-five by the time it's up. But I sent out an email to the gentleman at Vertical Bridge and we'll find out more soon.
Okay. I got, I had to write things. I forgot things, so I had questions I had to write down. Our Mount Jewett Rotary is going to be putting up the Christmas lights this Sunday morning to eight o'clock. We're planning on doing a light up night on the night of the twenty-second and I am asking for permission to use the Heritage Park again this year.
Yeah? Is that a problem?
Yep. And then I would like to invite the council members to come up for it also.
What date is that? Twenty-third, twenty-four?
It's Wednesday. Yeah, it's a Wednesday night.
Twenty-second.
What time?
Six P M. What time do we do it?
Six P M.
Six o'clock, okay. It'll be at the Grassy Ball because it's on November twenty-second, which some people get that, some people don't.
Jason, I don't know.
I was gonna say.
The President.
I've heard stories.
Yeah, that'll be sixty years.
Twenty-second and six P M?
Yeah. Yeah. And then I had discussions with a council member here to talk there about the homage signs and I did check and our sign for township request has been put in to be out on the west end of the Rachel Ordnance Commerce somewhere. And that's all I have.
All right. Uh, John?
Um, this is going to be our third year during the Reese Across America, um, Reese, or fourth year. I'm sorry. Um, Reese orders are due November twenty-eighth. We'll be using the fireman parking lot, the volunteer fire department parking lot again. That will be on December sixteenth at ten A M. That is Saturday. If you're interested in purchasing Reese, you can see me after, or you can visit the library. Tomorrow is election day. The library will be open from eight A M. to eight P M., so make sure you use your voice to vote wherever you go and return those overdue books. Also, Music on Sixth this year raised a hundred and eighty-six dollars. It was voted on at our last Hilltop Heritage Coalition meeting to purchase a thermometer for fundraising and this will not only be for the amphitheater, but also for any large rented projects that are needed through the Rotary, through the Sons, et cetera. They'll be reusable, et cetera, and they'll be a hundred and forty-four dollars. They'll be using the hundred and eighty-six towards that. We will be talking to the borough to get that, to address how much numbers, et cetera, and then also the placement of it. We propose probably where the amphitheater is going to be and then once that project is fully funded, we can move it on to the next project that we need to identify.
How old are the dimensions? I'm sorry, do you know?
Um, I think it's two feet by four feet. There you go, yeah. Sorry, I had this. Okay, it is. It is three feet wide by six feet tall.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is that all you have, Kelly?
Yes.
Anyone else from the public have anything to say? Will?
Coming up, Coursey Call Avenue to Main Street, the hedges are really grown pretty thick and it's hard to see coming out. And there's other hedges in town that are growing out of shape, so I just bring it to council attention.
Okay. Would you like to do those?
We trimmed those a couple of years ago for a similar complaint for the Legion.
Let me take another look at it. Do you have any other specific hedges? If it's like a private property situation and you have a concern about it, you can let us, not here, but tell the addresses and maybe we can see.
I trimmed mine after the leaves fall off.
Um, is that all you have?
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, we'll close public comment for now and we'll move on to the mayor's report. Come in, Mayor.
Not so much. Um, we had a very nice visit from the governor earlier in October. Thanks, everyone who came. And Jason, it was a nice showing from town. It was an honor to have him here at the Kinzu Bridge and he was very complimentary of our community, so I thought it was very exciting for everyone in town. And he presented the grant money for the P D Wiles, but also spoke about the grant for the, um, the Pocket Park project. So that was a very exciting time, I thought, for us, maybe. So I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you to the fire department for all of your help with trick or treat. It was very exciting. I thought it went really smoothly. And then as far as emergency planning, I know it's still on here. I think we probably could take that off for next meeting, but I just needed to follow up with you guys and tie that up totally. But that's kind of all I have.
And I want to congratulate you. You, speaking of a fine showing for the community, when you introduced the governor, you did a wonderful job and represented us very well.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Is there any questions for the mayor or the mayor's report? I got a motion to accept.
Motion.
Chris makes the motion. Tom makes the second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead and take a look at the maintenance report. Do you have a recall on the F three fifty already?
Yeah. It wasn't, may not affect that long. It was one that could have. It was something about the.
Axle.
The axle or if it was properly, uh.
Heat treated?
Heat treated, yeah. It was hardened up. Now they look. Yeah, that's good. Losing.
Hey, that, Tom? Where would we be without park?
We tried that once.
That's true. A motion to accept a maintenance report?
I'll second it.
Chris makes the motion. Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The manager's report, all right?
Okay, we have, uh, our budget needs to like be, um, motioned and seconded to go ahead and advertise it for passage in December, if that's what you guys choose to do. Um, all our savings accounts have been moved to the pligots. There is a Act thirteen grant through the county. I was gonna submit a, uh, application to see if we could get assistance for the Pocket Park for what we have to, um, pay, but they're only giving forty-seven thousand altogether out, so you wouldn't be able to get it all, but maybe a little bit. Um, that's up to you guys. If you want to do it, if you want to submit it for something else, that's fine too. We're scheduled to do the McWapic Dinner, which is on the new business at February twenty-second next year. My local share account pro, or grant has been submitted for Anderson Street. We've told Russ Braun to hold off on moving forward with, um, the house that needed to be demolished here in town. Evidently, they have a buyer for it and, um, that gentleman is going to take it down. And these people have found a house in Clarident to move to, so.
Did we ever get that in writing from?
I haven't got it yet.
Okay, let's talk, so we'll make sure.
One thing I don't have on my report, I got, um, the solvency fee for twenty twenty-four came in, if you guys want to pay it for the unemployment. It's two hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents.
Pay it every other year.
Well, that's the one that kept us from having to pay for Lori's unemployment because it protects you from any charges coming back at you.
Yep.
So that's up to you guys if you want to.
Do we want to make a motion on that then?
Perme?
Before discuss?
How come you didn't, or the video?
Perme?
The video conference we had.
Oh, I didn't think about it.
Barbara and I sat through a video conference with A P P I about solar energy in the Act twenty-two. It was rather interesting. It made things more clear, which I'm happier.
I'll make a motion on the solvency fee.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Right motion. Frank seconds. I'm paying the solvency fee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
We can either make the, I can either do the motion to advertise the budget now, or if you guys want to talk about it, we can talk about it later.
Uh, when we get to new business, they probably will ask us for any questions and things about it. Looking at this, the only thing that might need a decision here is her, um, her third bullet point.
Oh, for Pocket Park?
Well, about if we want to do that, or we want to submit for anything else, or not submit at all, or whatever.
We have till the end of December, so it's not really something that has to be, I mean.
We're committed to this public work anyhow. I don't see why.
That's why I was, that's what I was thinking.
I disagree. I would like to get this project out of the way so we can move on to other things. That's my own thought. Just get it done.
But it's up to you guys. I mean, I don't have to do it.
But, you know, that's why I wanted to actually have a little bit of room for discussion and maybe if we're of an agreement, make a decision tonight. If not.
I'd like to make the decision later.
I'd like to make motion or decision now.
I'll make a motion to use the money to have Barbara apply for this Greenway, the Greenway project to use towards the Pocket Park.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that? You, you're wanting to delay. Is there a reason?
Yeah, after I talk.
About the solar?
Yes.
All right, then, um, I, at this, I mean, we have a motion, we have a second, so I guess you want to talk now?
Well, I just think that it would be something useful that we possibly.
Because, well, we also, if we're gonna talk about it, we have to amend the agenda to make room for it, don't we?
No.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, but it actually, um, it's older business because it was mentioned in July's meeting.
All right, then let's put this vote on hold.
We still want to vote for this.
Why? It was motioned and seconded.
If he brings something up that we want to try and find other funding, we're on the hook for this money for park.
I agree with that.
So if he's motioned, I'm second. I'd like to call for a vote, if you would.
I will call for a vote then. Uh, we'll go ahead and do a, a roll call though.
Okay. Chris?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Frank?
No.
All right, uh, is there anything else in the manager's report?
No, that's all I have today.
Any motion to accept that? Motion?
Second.
Chuck makes the motion. Chris makes the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move on. Through the approval of the minutes, if there's no questions or concerns, then we'll stand as presented.
Oh, there was something.
Yes, sir.
At the last meeting, I got a chance to actually sit and listen to it. You said at the end of the meeting that the, um, maintenance ordinance was mine. It actually belongs to your newly created ordinance group.
Maintenance ordinance. What maintenance ordinance?
I don't know. That's the one that you, you brought up.
I brought up, but it's not mine. The property maintenance rental inspections.
My manager project.
No, it's not.
You brought it up.
I brought it up.
Then you do it. If you brought, then I'm not doing it. You brought it up, you do it.
Well, then I guess it won't be done and we don't care about people's safety.
Where, where are we at? I thought we were doing.
You have an ordinance group.
I thought we were doing minutes.
Yeah, it was, he listened to the minutes and he brought up the.
Oh, it's not in my minutes, though.
No, no.
No.
He just brought it up.
Okay.
We're good with the minutes?
We're good with the minutes.
I haven't, I mean, I haven't, or anyone on the minutes, so it looks like it's on the treasurer's report.
Barbara, that's seven thousand, did you do the rest here, or is it gonna?
Well, I have a little more because I put some money in the bank. Um, we got, I put forty, forty-two hundred in the bank today.
Oh, okay.
Because we had got, um, realty transfer tax and, um, some more taxes that she dropped off today.
Okay.
So what I figured is we'll keep going until we absolutely have to move something.
Okay.
I mean, as long as we got enough to keep us going.
And then usually start going back in, how do you like the boring part?
Usually you get a big thing, um, beginning of January because all the people will pay at the end of the year.
Oh, yeah.
So we should be okay. We'll, we'll be all right. If we might have to move some money from savings and put it back, but.
We get that twenty thousand back from the county.
We haven't heard anything from that yet.
At the end of the day, we have six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars total available revenue. Only four ninety-five of that is savings. Here's our CDs, so while it's tight, we don't like to borrow from our savings all the time. It's unsustainable, it's.
It's there if I have to move it. I, you know, you just. Yeah, other than that, everything's good.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
Why aren't the tires in the Englishes or whatever? Is there a reason? Is that like just the highway fund, just a separate account that?
The Highway Eight fund is your liquid fuels.
Yeah, but is that just like you wrote a check?
I wrote a check for, uh, the liquid fuel account.
From that, okay.
Yes.
I was just curious.
That's why. Because you can use that for, um, vehicle stuff and machinery, stuff like that.
Do we really only have seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, we really only have seven.
In the general.
In the general.
No, no, and I understand that.
In the checking. That's what we have.
We can draw from anything out of here and I understand that, but it's just.
Like I said, there's a little more now because I just put money in today.
But per the, per the budget that we've been working with this year, we, we knew that it was gonna be tied at the end.
Yeah.
So we're, we're still kind of where we expected to be.
Yep.
Is my understanding.
Just didn't expect it to be that tight.
Well, we also approved the twenty-eight thousand dollars out of the general fund instead of taking it from the savings. So. All right, put it back.
Any additional questions on the treasurer's report? Payment bills?
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report payment bills.
I'll second it.
Chris makes the motion. Frank seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, shift into committee reports. Streets and buildings.
All right, uh, one of the things I wanted to bring up is I've been asked multiple times in the last three months, and if we can get to bring it up here again about Paulson Alley over here next to the information booth. As far as, you know, since we've had the streets redone and it's still washing down over across there, you know, onto the new approach there and stuff, but we own, as far as the park going up in, we own probably two-thirds of that. I don't know if there's any way we could, I, does anybody, do you remember as far as that trough that?
I don't think that's ours.
I don't know. It's, I think that's just off of ours.
Yeah.
But that's what Dawn always had kept cleaned out to keep that from happening, what happens down across there.
Yeah. If they grade it at the top and clean it out, that trough would be fine. My opinion on it is, just because we own it and we allow people to use it, doesn't mean we need to be spending money on improvements for people that are using it as their driveway.
Well, I understand, I mean, as far as it's still coming down into our.
That trough, I believe, is Brian's.
It's coming down into our.
Oh, I, I know, but that, that trough up front was Brian's and I believe Hy-Dox now and nobody's done anything with that trough, I don't think, since Paulson owned the place. So I don't know what we could do other than put our own trough in above it on our property, but we don't own all of it. And I know they want us to take it over and make it a street, but I'll never vote for it.
No, I don't think it should be a street, but I just, you know, it's our responsibility and I don't like seeing all that stuff come down on our.
I mean.
And is there anything that we can do just with what we own?
If we don't get the water off of it, it's gonna continue to happen, right? I mean, I, I, I don't know what we're gonna do. These people above need to, we could put a trench and tie into that or do something or pave our little section, which we get streets that we don't have paved, so I, I don't know what we can do. B, did you got an idea?
No, I just, I didn't know as far as like that where Paulson had that up there. I can remember.
It's completely covered now.
Always having his guys clean it out. Uh, yeah.
Last time I was up there, it's, I don't even know if you could find it.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I think, I think Brian had it filled in because it seems to be all Millings now.
Would Millings, would, would some good quality Millings pack down on our part, on, on ours? Would that, would that help at all?
Put it in, but it just, it's washing out because that water is so powerful when it comes down. That's a big hill. It comes down, it does, most of the Millings we put in washed out. We don't have a big roller or anything to really hammer them in.
But, uh, good quality Millings with a roller, would, would that make it almost a blacktop surface to help? I mean, because.
You get, you get the same stuff from the fire hall. We put them in, they got fire engines that are, you know, got five thousand gallons of water in them and they're not, you know, I mean, come across it. They still wash out down there. And that's ninety-five percent of not a hundred percent Millings. So I don't, I don't know that word either.
And there's no, as far, I, I'm guessing that there's no legal ground to put pressure on property owners to do anything about the other end? Because it's not a road. All we can do is, is make an effort. It's gonna cost us more money in maintenance just to keep a lower end of it clean when it, when it walk, when the stuff goes on.
And that's why we put our, our catch basin in, in the hopes that most of the stuff would be off of our main sidewalks, you know?
Yeah.
Up there, catch the water so it didn't lay, but shore it, pave it and get that catch basin clean, which isn't ours. I don't know what we can do, really.
Well, I'd look into as far as seeing where that one's at, just to have an idea.
Maybe. If he would allow us to open it up, maybe our guys clean out that trough so just in an effort that maybe a couple of times a year, so they don't have to go scrape it off the sidewalk, that would be fine. But if you fill it in or it's busted up and.
Right, if it's filled in.
What we can do.
I don't know if it's still there, if you took it out or if you just covered it.
Covered it and took the metal off of it.
Because the piping might even be filled through.
Well, that's the thing. It's probably packed around wherever it went, because I don't know, I don't know where it went.
Well, I'll look, I'll look into it to see what. But I just, it just makes me sick when all that stuff running down across our new concrete and stuff there and.
I'm sure our guys would rather take this shovel full out of the trough, you know, after a heavy rain or something, then they would go down there and mess with it on the sidewalks, but if it's plugged.
Right. That's gonna be the issue and, uh, Mike tied that into.
Any others?
Anything you think of?
Well, we had, uh, a wheel seal went out on the twenty sixteen and was repaired. Big Dog along with the, uh, calipers had been frozen open. I don't know that that was in the bill.
I haven't got a bill yet.
Okay, so other than that, the guys, the guys were gonna redo all the brakes and stuff and after talking to Big Dog, they said, we're not gonna pull all this off, you know, we have the parts here that the bottom was broken, as we're gonna do this. They said, we have to remove physically all of that and put this back on, so as far as the savings, they want me to say, hey, have our guys do it.
That's all right. Okay. Finance insurance?
We'll discuss the budget and new business.
Okay. Chris, no?
I spoke with, uh, two of the three. Uh, John was off, but everything seems to be going fine. I have no issues. Thank you.
All right. Community development, planning parks.
Yeah, and it's funny because, uh, this whole, uh, solar thing actually falls into the kid, the community development, which I didn't realize.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, because it talks about infrastructure and it uses examples such as water and whatever, but it also says that crucial in promoting economic development opportunities. And this solar really is an economic opportunity. And it is considered infrastructure because it's green energy. But when it was discussed about the twenty twenty-two act, and this was based on the information we had at hand, it was stated that there was only gonna be a seven percent rebate. There is literally a fifty percent rebate. Thirty percent, which is the original, and the only reason we talked, the seven percent is because we didn't know about the, um, Congress passing the extension. This thirty percent is actually, this, actually the whole fifty percent is extended right into twenty twenty-three. I mean, twenty thirty, thirty-three. We would get thirty percent just because we went solar. We would get ten percent based on the location because we fall within it.
Thirty percent of what? What, what, what are we?
Thirty percent of the cost.
Of the cost of setting this up?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
And then we would get ten percent based on being in a specific location and we are within the quote-unquote "energy community," pretty much all of K and Kamy is. So that's another ten percent and then there's a ten percent, um, rebate on domestic product. So if you, most of the setup is domestic product, meaning American-made, solar panels, roof structure, whatever. We're, we're really looking at a fifty percent rebate of what this will be. We need about a forty kilowatt system, which will produce about fifty-six hundred kilowatt hours per year, I mean, month. And it's between, it'll actually generate between forty and sixty-seven thousand kilowatt hours annually. We burn somewhere between fifty and sixty kilowatt hours with all of our meters. And they have this thing called net metering. So what happens is we plop something on the roof here. This meter runs backwards because you'll be generating more than you'll ever be using, especially on this building. Those credits build up, they're, they're applied to the other accounts. So like the streetlight account and whatever, you would generally not have an electric bill. You're looking at a saving of about probably anywhere from seven to eight thousand dollars. And if you generate more credits than you've used, they have to settle it up at the end of the year and pay you. So you're actually adding to the budget about seven or eight thousand dollars every year and panels last, they're warranted for, um, performance twenty-five to thirty years. It's projected they will last fifty years. So based on that, even if we were to, let's say, invest the whole, just put the money out, within seventy-nine years with the fifty percent rebate, we would actually have free money. If we were to get grants, which there are grants available because this falls under infrastructure and whatever else, and we don't know. If we were to get grants, which there are grants available because this falls under infrastructure and whatever else, and we don't know what new is coming along. And there's a lot of communities that are starting to look at this, but we have the added benefit of all of our meters are within a two-mile radius. And the whole reason that was set up was actually for school systems and farms and things like that. So like if a big farm's running in, but their field is over here by this barn, as long as that barn is using some sort of electricity, they could set the solar panel up right next to it and all the meters fall into it. So you're, you're looking at going and, uh, it's an opportunity. It's a serious opportunity to save tax dollars.
Did you get an estimate on it?
It's three dollars per watt.
Installation?
Three dollars per watt.
To install?
Everything.
Which comes to what? I don't know how many watts we're talking.
Well, if we did-
Say you did this building?
Well, the whole object would be made to use a forty kilowatt system. And I was thinking of doing it in state, put like a twenty kilowatt system here, which cost us about sixty thousand dollars. Half of which we would get back within six to eighteen months depending. Now, when we were talking to APPI, the last time there was some kind of rebate, he said, everybody got it back within six months. So he doesn't see a reason why it wouldn't be, but to say six to eighteen months is a very safe and conservative bet. So that part, we would literally have to finance in some way. But we would get it back and finance time would be very, very small.
Your ten percent though for USA-made, he did say if you put it on the roof, you probably won't get that.
You're right.
Because you can't find those panels made in the United States.
However, talking to somebody else, there are still American-made panels and there-
Well, he did say-
All of the information for American-made is not out yet. There's still more information to come out. There's actually information that's supposed to come out on school systems and things of that nature. This is a, a whole work in progress.
So is this something-
That's why I had said twenty twenty-five.
And you talked about being able to do it in waves. Is this something that you could put together in documents to break down the waves, the costs? Some, something you can hand out to us to make sure we fully understand?
Well, I'm kinda breaking it down right now. It's not really that hard. A twenty kilowatt system, like I said, cost us sixty grand. Now, if we can get grants, like you guys voted on that Greenway, that Greenway grant would actually help in that matter. Other grants, depending on Z C E D and whatever else, but if we don't start exploring now and looking at grants and trying to get grants, it's basically dead nor.
I, I, talking for me personally, I would be more comfortable voting on a proposal that involves that much money that is written out and presented and laid out because I like to see it all projected out.
I believe in emails, it has been laid out.
We've got a lot in the emails. I'm talking concise, like an actual proposal, like this is my proposal, this is what I'm proposing. So then year one, we do this, we do a third of it, whatever it is you're saying.
And like I said, I believe I'm saying year one, we would put the solar panels on this building. Year two, we would put the solar panels on the library.
Okay, are, are you saying you're opposed to the idea of putting it in writing?
I'm not, it's not the point of being opposed, it's the point of moving forward. You're delaying it.
I got one email that said something about solar, had no particulars whatsoever, had no cost, had no return on investment, had no, had no kilowatt.
They were, they were being sent to you and Chris, myself. I don't know how many of them were sent to everybody.
They weren't sent to anybody else.
I got one big line.
That's why I was saying something we could present to the whole body.
But it's being presented to the whole body right now.
Well, but verbally, I guess here's the deal.
And the mayor's report is verbal every time.
Yeah, I don't have any money.
She's not asking for us to give thousands of dollars.
I'm not asking for money either. I'm asking to move forward to this project and actually-
Okay, then what is it specifically, because what are you asking to be able to do right now?
Right now, I'd like to actually apply to the Act thirteen grant, but you already voted to use it for something else.
Okay, I can't go back and undo that, so what would you like?
Well, actually, you could have gone back and undone it, but that's a whole nother story.
Is there any concern in the fact that, like, we have solar panels, I can't even power the speed signs right now?
Well, see now, when you're talking about a solar panel, that's your big, big difference between the three-foot by five-foot solar panel. And the three-foot by five-foot solar panel actually has warranties on it. Do your speed signs have a twenty-five-year warranty on them?
I'd have to go back and look. I, I guess my thought on it is to Jason's point, uh, you know, you're asking me to vote on something that, you know, potentially be sixty thousand dollars with no documentation, just because you're telling me there's a twenty-five-year warranty and it's the greatest thing since sliced bread.
Well, actually, what I'm, what I'm telling you is based on the conversation Barbara and I had on the video.
Did, did I?
Did he say, did he say that it was twenty-five years?
Yes, he did.
Well, that's great, but did I hear it?
Okay, I, I, can I say something?
Nothing.
There's no reason, if you want to, you couldn't put in for both of those. I mean, they're only forty-seven thousand dollars, but why not put in for both of them? But for you to put in for it, you're gonna have to have a design. You're gonna have to have it all laid out step by step by step and a design for them. Or you're not going, and I don't want something that's thirty pages long that I have to go and nitpick through it to try to find a design.
Well, that's all one-
It's a one-page thing and you need to have a design that I can go, okay, here's what we want and submit it.
Yes, because it's just basically a proposal.
Because it doesn't cost anything to submit it, but I'm not gonna take eight emails full of information and try to figure out what you want from it.
Effectively, what I, all I've been asking for was a written proposal that it does move forward. Here it is. Barb, go, here's a grant, here's the proposal. What can we do? I mean, right now, I, I don't see that proposal.
If we're talking spending a couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe we get somebody in here to talk to us. Maybe it is a good thing. Maybe we put a solar array at the park.
Well, here's what I'm gonna tell you. APPI recommended this one solar company, which they stand behind because they actually will service their equipment and they will honor warranties. They've been around a long time. And I spoke with the gentleman and he says, until something is approved by your council, we're not gonna waste our finances coming up here to give you any kind of presentation or anything like that because of the cost of living these days. Fuel alone, as we experience, is quite expensive.
Well, we can't guarantee them anything.
So maybe, maybe we pay, hey, what's it gonna cost to get you up here to give us a presentation? I'd spend two grand on a, on a, let's, let's look at it and see what, see what we might talk about, but just-
Would they be willing to do?
But you're not taking it.
Fifty pages.
Would they be willing to do a Zoom thing so they could explain it to everybody?
I might be able to set that up.
But the Act thirteen stuff, there's no reason you can't submit for both if you want it. It doesn't say you can only submit for one.
I don't think we'll have enough information until we have a proposal.
If you have enough information.
Well.
I just personally didn't wanna do it myself without getting permission from council.
All my information came from Andrea Verbis from Glenn Thompson's office, Noel Temple, who's from APPI Energy, Michael Lewis, who is also APPI, Robert Young, Energy Program Specialist at the G E P, and Warren Miller, who's the Director of Sales and Marketing at Paradise Energy Solutions. And this is the information that they provided. It's really not that complicated. You're gonna get fifty percent back as long as you meet all the criteria. You will see a return on investment because it's there.
I think if you could put a proposal out, maybe people could talk and, you know, have a dialogue about trying to ram something in.
Nobody's ramming anything in.
I know you're not gonna, but you, I think you're trying.
No, I'm not. What I'm trying to do is have us say-
I think you don't understand how to work with a group and sit down and prepare a thing and get it to the finish line.
No, actually-
I talked to this person, I talked to them. Why you talk to anybody? I don't know anything about it, so I'm not gonna vote to give money.
It's not, it's not different when you get your phone call close.
Oh, yeah, except I know about what a truck costs or what a building costs. I don't know anything about solar or how this is gonna work and if it's gonna work.
Oh, you don't think solar will work?
I'm not saying around here, snow on the roof, is it gonna work? Do I know anything about it? No, I don't.
They're not gonna put this in over the winter.
No, they're not.
So I don't think anything being delayed at this point, like you said, to try to get more information. If that involves seeing if they'll do a Zoom meeting or, or, you basic, you need to educate this council on this. We do not understand this even as well as you do. You've been doing a lot of time in research.
What questions do you have?
I don't have it in front of me to go through it and it was a lot of information. That's why I asked, is there anything to get? A proposal, like nine, ten pages at most, where it just breaks it all down. What are you proposing? How does it work? Where are the studies of how much solar works in Pennsylvania with our weather and everything that's great? So we can verify this is worth doing. I don't know all my questions right now.
I know we have solar at the sewer plant and it has to have short power to charge it in the winter months because we just don't get enough daylight.
And how large is the system?
I don't know because I'm, I'm not educated on, because I don't have a proposal. When I was there, when it was pretty simple.
You're talking about the solar bees that would spend seven thousand or eleven thousand a year.
Yeah, and they work.
They work.
For the most part, but they're not cost-free.
So what we're asking is we would like to understand the system more. Is it possible to see if this company, because if they want us to hire them, would be willing to educate us in some way?
If you're willing to pay for their time, then maybe it's a possibility.
We'll find out what that means. Because if there really is a great savings for our community and it's a future direction to go that's great, maybe, maybe I'm willing to pay that to learn more about it.
They even provided me with a projection.
That's great. If everybody would've got it instead of just Frank.
Well, look, there it is.
Well, that's great. I'm not gonna look at it because that's not how meetings are run.
Yeah, okay.
Nope, I'm sorry, everybody. Sorry, it can't work.
Yeah, I know, I'm so difficult.
We also have work session in two weeks. This is something that could be broken down in work session. We have a little more time to dig into it. Print out copies for everybody of whatever is relevant because that's a big stack and you have three of those folders. And I don't know, does everybody need to read all of that to understand this?
No, that's why it's written down all nice and neat right here.
Oh, yet again, we don't have it.
Well, you see, it's funny because when I ask for things to be in a packet, they don't appear there.
What did you ask?
Oh, I asked.
You asked for nothing to be in the packet or it would be there.
I will forward you the email that I sent you.
I know you requested for this to be put out.
If you ask me to print something out and give it to everybody, it is done. The emails you sent to me went to Jason and me and Chris and you didn't say, please share this with everybody else.
I believe I said I want this in the packet.
You said you want it on the agenda. I remember.
No, that was a different email.
Oh, okay. Barb, with that Greenway's grant, how quick do you have to spend? If they give us the money, is there a timeframe on how long?
What are you talking about?
The Greenway's grant.
The Greenway's grant. Once we, if we apply and we get the money.
I think it's two years.
Is it two years?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would need to be done by the end of twenty twenty-five.
You said we have till the end of December to decide on.
Yeah.
So if we wanna go and add solar to it and do another one, we do have time to do that. So there could be a follow-up, either in a work session or a Zoom meeting. If that company is willing to come up here, maybe we'll come up. So in my mind, that's the next step is to get us more information in a way that-
Oh, I'll get you more information, but I can tell you right now, it's probably gonna cost you.
Okay, they get us that.
Information, why does information cost anything? If you're a customer, then they should give you information as a potential customer.
With the cost of living today, nobody wants to just come out and, maybe I'll do that.
We couldn't guarantee them to be a customer anyways because the total cost of this is probably gonna be something we'd have to pay out.
We'd have to pay it off.
You can't guarantee anybody either. So I don't know. That's why Barb suggested a Zoom meeting if they're willing to do that. If there's another company, I don't know, but that's-
Man, I wouldn't think a Zoom meeting would cost them anything, an hour of their time to sit and potentially be a customer.
Well, if I could set up a Zoom meeting, we'll see what happens. I had a Zoom meeting set up and actually the only one that would be available for that Zoom meeting was Barbara.
Well, that's, we'll have to tie it off, so.
And it's gonna be during work hours.
Well, maybe you could set it up that they could do it at like five o'clock at night where everybody could be there.
If they're flexible, depending on, on where they are or where they're located, they could Zoom, uh, 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 either before or after our regular monthly meeting.
I think quite a few people, so you get some help.
All right, no problem. So parks.
Anything else?
The five-year plan that you had, this year was year one. The only thing that was done was the, um,
Changing tables.
Changing tables. On your five-year plan was the stairs for the upper pavilion.
That was gonna be the big project.
Yes. Well, the problem with stairs to the upper pavilion is they quite don't meet code because they don't have a handrail.
I know there's been a lot of discussion about those stairs.
Yes.
As to whether it was even worth doing.
Well, whether it's worth doing or not, as long as the stairs are there and the handrail should be there to meet code and safety.
So the solution could be to remove them?
I actually proposed that solution because I thought there were problems with the wood. Barbara said she went with maintenance and checked it out and all was good. So if they're good, then we just need a handrail. And that could be done with pipe, whatever. That could be actually done by maintenance.
And probably from the parks budget account, if that's what you're proposing to do.
If you wish to take it from the parks budget account, it's about twelve hundred bucks.
Yeah, it was put in the pligot, so.
My only personal concern about that is that the stairs are inadequate for the hill or only a portion of it.
Why don't you just have them taken out then?
And that would make more sense.
Because the top pavilion doesn't even have electricity to it right now.
I, I don't see the purpose of investing in partial stairs, so.
Well, that's fine and we'll have them removed.
We have them, that's my thought.
It just solves the whole code issue. That was my biggest issue there. But, and then year two, there's some other things, which you know on a five-year plan and I'll see what I can do. It's a fluid plan. We have the codes on all this stuff.
Right, it's a fluid plan, so if things have to shift or move, so be it. If the plan changes or gets rejected completely, so be it.
And I think that might be it.
All right, fire department. We got nothing.
We got nothing.
Things are running up smoothly. We got some new members at society.
It is.
Uh, library. Anything going on down at the library? You've covered it all. Uh, sewer.
Still falling down.
Nothing there. All right, before I get to code enforcement, I wanna say in the purpose, in the spirit of, of trying to work together, I wanna go back to the, the, the discussion about the property maintenance proposal and why we were saying that it was yours and the thought that was going to that. And it's kind of similar to the other is, um, in order for the, the ordinance committee to take a look at that.
It was submitted to them, the actual ordinance from Bradford. She even stated at the meeting, I have it and will look at it.
But was the proposal then to adopt exactly that ordinance?
I would say exactly that ordinance. It works for them, why wouldn't it work with us?
Okay, then if that's the proposal, then that's what needs to be discussed in that meeting. I didn't know if it needed to be modified, in which case I was gonna say that, that's why I was saying it was submitted to your project because you had an understanding of what you were envisioning for how it would be implemented here.
Well, my biggest concern is the renter. There's so many people out there that wanna treat renters very poorly and like the fire that happened up here, person sold somebody a house without heat. I mean, really? There needs to be some kind of certificate of compliance when it comes to things like this because there were, how many propane tanks up there that caused an issue?
Okay, so if what you presented is exactly what you are proposing.
Then it's even on their E code three six.
And if there are questions, you're willing to be a part of the questions and answers?
I'll answer as many questions as I think I can. I'm not a code enforcement official.
Neither are we. There's questions of, of enforcement, uh, what, what kind of penalties, all these kinds of, what would that process be? Again, I don't know if it's exactly the same as Bradford. They have offices and positions that we don't.
Oh, I understand that.
Process might be different and that's what would all have to be worked out in order to implement that new code. All of that would have to be detailed before you go to the lawyer, like we had to do with the signs. We had to cover every little detail with that. So that's what I was asking, if, if all of those proposals have made their way here, then we're good. And if there's questions, you're the guy. I wanna make sure you're okay with that. Because you brought it.
And like I said, I'm not a code enforcement official.
I'm not a code enforcement official either. I just sit on the committee to help make through the right decisions.
I'm not saying that you're-
I've had enough. I wanna get this moving, meeting moving.
I've had enough. I wanna get this movie, meeting moving. I'm tired of the bars being thrown. You gotta work as a council and get this taken care of. Let's move on.
I just wanted to try and ease some of that. I failed. Anyways, code enforcement, anything on that?
No.
Okay. Old business. You know, I'm gonna look at you, Brett, on the borough building.
Yeah, we haven't got that far.
All right.
Want my job?
Um, house owners, still waiting on a lawyer, correct?
Yep.
So that is, that's it. We're discussing the plan. We're already discussed that. Uh, property maintenance rental inspections, just covered that.
I have a question. Are we going to do that emergency response thing then? Are we going to adopt that? Is that what we?
Yeah, I think it was adopted pending. I should tell it to Scotty still, so I just.
So we are doing it. I mean, you said pending everybody's, okay.
Yeah, we 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 motioned, we voted to adopt it unless there's a problem.
Okay, so there wasn't any trouble?
Well, I don't know if they got any other look at it yet.
No, we haven't talked about it. Your schedule, my schedule just ain't matching.
Okay, so it's still kinda up in there.
Rob, I'll make sure that.
But I don't know that it needs to be there.
That's okay.
I don't know that it needs to be there unless it becomes an issue.
We could take it off. Okay.
If they bring it back, I would say it's a problem.
Only if it's an issue, it comes back. Otherwise.
Okay.
Um, all right, so that's it on old business, moving to new business and budget. So we either need to uh vote to advertise the budget or if there are concerns with the budget, we need to have a special work session meeting, which is already scheduled, two weeks out.
I have a few questions with budget, so.
Would you like to push it to a work session?
I thought we talked about it while it went two hours.
Well, we did, but.
Two hours, I answered all your questions.
But you didn't answer all the questions when it came to certain thing. Like you stated that the employees pay two percent.
Brett, would you like to address that one? Because I told you I didn't know when it started.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay, Brett does know when it started.
Well, hell, Will, you were on council back when we went from zero to two percent. It's probably been.
Ten years now. Penn Dot pays five.
That's not a lot of things, like a union, dude.
Yeah, Penn Dot has more money than we do.
Maybe we oughta put a union in it once somebody starts running their mouth on Facebook about the employee's gonna do shit. Maybe we can.
But nobody runs their mouth on Facebook.
No, 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 I don't have.
No, actually, we talk about you.
Please be as civil as humanly possible.
That's about as civil as humanly possible as I can get.
Well, that's just too bad.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, when you look at it in a realistic point of view, paying two percent is rather ridiculous to the taxpayer.
And paying sixteen dollars an hour for a full time employee is rather uh ridiculous to a full time employee when you can go out to sheets and make that work at nice for the murders.
Yeah, and I can just imagine how much were your were your benefits?
I'm not getting into this with you.
Yeah, there you go.
Hey, hey, we're not gonna have a discussion that gets into the nitty gritty of what we're paying personnel in this public meeting.
I I'll get the budget.
But a work session will still be a public meeting.
Hey, I love the budget. I like it, and I'll make a motion.
But you asked specifically is what I'm getting at.
I'll make, I'll second that motion.
Okay, wait a minute.
All right, there's a motion on the floor.
If you wish to not address questions and not have a work session, that's cool, whatever.
Does anybody wanna have a work session?
No.
I don't know the protocol at this point. Am I supposed to have to call for the vote because of this?
Yeah, you do.
Well, yeah, because you have a motion and a second. Now you go to vote, vote. If they don't, if whoever doesn't wanna vote for it doesn't vote for it, whoever does vote for it does go for it.
But I'm.
He he can have discussion. He can ramble on for a long amount of time.
And that's what I'm saying, I'm.
Yeah, I can ramble on for a very long time if I really wanted to, but I choose not to because I wanna be, you know, as civil as possible.
But the vote.
Okay.
The vote is on the floor.
You know, you wanna just keep taking.
Can we just?
Personal jab.
Hey, hey, please stop. Just, we're here to conduct business, please. Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. I am opening the floor for a discussion about it. If you have something you would like to say now, but the vote will happen tonight.
If the vote happens, we're not gonna discuss anything because they're not ready to discuss anything. If they're happy with it, it's good. We don't care about the taxpayer.
There's no tax increase. There's no tax increase going forward. Ah, yeah, there's no tax. It's my turn to speak, Frank. Thank you. There's no tax increase in the budget. Am I correct?
No, there's no tax increase.
And there's no, there's no increase in wages.
No, there's no increase in wages.
A very tight budget. Yes. And and I don't know that quibbling over a a a couple of percent here or there is gonna change any any magnitude for the benefit of the taxpayer at all. I think we run a very tight budget and we do a good job of balancing things and keeping things in order for this community. If you wanna quibble about it, you go for it right now.
Great. We spent forty thousand dollars on benefits alone.
Yes.
They put in twenty four hundred. Three employees, twenty four hundred.
Three, yep.
That's it. The taxpayers stuck with thirty eight thousand?
The taxpayers are getting a very good value for their dollar in this community, in my opinion. We 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 give the 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 community quality people, quality workmanship on a regular basis. We have a stable uh 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 personnel committee that don't create a lot of riffraff in town. And one of the only problems we have back here is because of you.
Is it?
Yes, it is. The complaints I get from personnel mostly are concerning you, sir.
How can that be?
Because they don't like how you come in and scrutinize and criticize and ridicule and try to tell them how to do their job.
But I don't.
Yes, you do.
Wait.
Okay, wait a minute. Can I say something? Can I say something here? I'm an employee. I'm gonna tell you how I feel. I'm fine with not getting a raise, but I can't afford for you to take stuff away from me every year either while I don't get a raise. Not only that, I don't like the way you put on Facebook, we only pay this much, making us look like we're taking advantage of the taxpayers.
But you also do pay this much.
This is my job. This is my job.
I understand that.
But that's not her fault.
But it's not my fault, but then people look at me like I'm a crook or something. That should have never been on Facebook.
I never said it was back on there. We're talking about the budget here. We're talking about.
Yeah, and you're also throwing shit out there, and everything you keep putting out there is about the employees and how much we pay here and what we cost you there and what we do here. You know what, Frank? I don't need it.
It's the budget. It's exactly what's on the budget. It's public information. All right, and as far as you go?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
I'd like to know when I come and scrutinize the employees, because very seldom am I in here ever. Actually, last time I was here was the last time I was here at Tobacco Web Burger. And you know what happened? I'm gonna tell you what happened.
This is off topic.
The ma- the maintenance supervisor and I walked around and he showed me this and that and the new improvements and the insulation, the new heat. But I never sat and complained about anything.
All right, if we're gonna be off topic this much, we're gonna just call for the vote. Because this has nothing to do with the budget now. You're talking about whether you're complaining.
Well, they wanna make personal jabs. Why can't I make personal jabs?
And you both had your time to do that. Are we done now?
No, not really.
Okay, but we're going to be. So we're gonna call for a vote. It's gonna be a roll call vote unless you have something specific to the budget. And I don't think you have the support, honestly, to do anything anyways.
I know I don't have the support.
Brett.
So, roll call vote, please.
You ready?
Yeah.
Brett?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Frank?
No.
Okay.
Um, I believe this next up is Chuck's sister city project. I heard a little bit about this.
Uh. I have seen some signs in other cities, uh most recently Pittsfield, Massachusetts, which has some sister cities in two or three other countries. And I looked into it and I spoke with the mayor. And I would, I have a handout here. I printed out, this is just a a very brief overview of the sister city project. Towns and cities of all sizes can uh get on board and uh partner with another city in another country and share uh economic, uh cultural, maybe perhaps student exchanges. There's a, there's a wealth of possibilities. Uh, one of the things that I would like to consider is that because of our extensive Swedish heritage, that we would, uh, if we were to look into this further.
Thank you for the proposal.
Yes. Uh, that perhaps, I prepared one for the press as well.
Thank you.
And we could perhaps look into what it would take to become a sister city with someone in Sweden because of our tremendous Swedish heritage and involvement and how much ancestral uh and cultural the uh impact that the Swedes had on Mount Jewett. Um, my name doesn't end in S O N, but my mother was an Anderson. My parents immigrated, my grandparents, I'm sorry, immigrated from southwestern Sweden. Uh, I think it would be great to be 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 become a sister city with Engelholm or uh Homestock where I I have family and relatives. But anyway, what I would like you to do as individuals is take a, take a moment, uh, take this home when you look it over. This is just, I just, I just printed out two pages from a couple of things there. Uh, for a town our size to get on board, it would cost a hundred and ninety dollars annually. Um, uh, we're a long way from making that type of vote. What I'd like to do, Mr. President, uh, if you would, is to uh put together a committee. Uh, I would volunteer to be on it, perhaps the mayor and one or two other people to look and see uh what kind of cultural advantages this could actually spur, um, perhaps economic development uh from uh uh people from another country, another city. Someone might get on board and say, wow, look what these people are doing with their Swedish festival. Uh, I have relatives in Sweden who contact me and they they watch what goes on at the Swedish festival. I have a relative that emails me and says, I see your trucks in the driveway. That's kinda spooky, but he gets on Google Maps. So they they are aware i- in that little town and and so Karen Olson brought in s- uh, six women from Sweden for our Swedish festival recently. Th- this is the kind of thing that could possibly move forward and and help us uh with some cultural and economic development moving forward. So there you go. That's my proposal.
I think it's a great idea. If you wanna spearhead, try to put a committee together.
I will.
Fully support that.
Okay, all right. Brianna, will you? But actually, in in order to to sign up for this, uh, the whoever the governing body is, the the person who's in charge of that or the top of that, which in this case would be either you or Jason, they pretty much have to be the ones that that sign off on it.
Do you think we need a full committee to do it, or you mean you just kinda independently, kinda?
I I'm fine if it's just you and me. I didn't know if anybody else was gonna be on it or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can include everybody.
I'll be interested, but.
Yeah, yeah.
If you wanna actually sit down and do face to face conversations, we can certainly do that in a committee, but everyone.
All right, take a look at this thing here and and then also, and it's 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 all, they've they've got a tremendous website. They've got a tremendous website. There's countries, there's cities and and countries all over the world. Uh, Pittsfield, Mass, I I I think they have two or three sister cities, Croatia, Poland, what else? I know Chicago is, because of its strong Polish heritage and community, has uh has adopted ci- uh sister cities in Poland. So that's, I I just think it would be a good opportunity for us to move forward a little bit of PR and and perhaps uh get some economic and cultural development going with somewhere along the line.
Okay, I think that's great.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, the next thing we have on here is the Gwapik. Um, as was mentioned in the manager's report, it's coming up February twenty second, and we are hosting this next one. Chuck, Chuck again, leaning on you, uh, took some some great initiative and found us a speaker and some other things. So I'm gonna actually let you lay out what you've done so far.
I uh spoke with Jill at Martin Causer's office and asked her if he would be available uh to be our guest speaker. It's been several years since he was out of the Gwapik function. And uh they came back uh with an affirmative and Martin Causer is agreed to be our speaker. Uh, the American Legion is available at a very reasonable cost. It would just a little bit be decide whether or not, how much cleanup we wanted to do or pay them. Uh, the location, uh, a couple of others are s- are suggested and could be available. Uh, the reason I'm leaning towards the uh Veterans Memorial Club is because of the time of year as opposed to some other locations that may be available and winter parking and so on and so forth. Uh, I've also made soft contact with Lisa Johnson as a potential caterer. Uh, there would still have to be some uh decisions made as far as cost and menu and also if we were going to do gift baskets. Uh, nothing, none of this is etched in stoner in writing. I just lay it out there as a proposal for the February meeting. And if it doesn't meet your approval, if you have other suggestions or ideas, then uh then we will move on.
Well, we've been to one for quite some time when they added Kane. Would they, what was they did there? Were they the centerpieces? Is that what they gave away?
Yes.
Kane gave away centerpieces. They've done, a lot of, a lot of different things. Uh, some of them have just a few items and you either win or you don't.
Right.
Some have a whole table full of little knickknacks and like hats from Sandman or whatever, and everybody gets something.
You do.
Yes, like that was specific. Uh, so there's a lot of different options.
Yeah, and 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 with us not having a tremendous retail or or business, I mean, but you know, there's there's, there are still people who would make a donation enough for, you know, if we go out to Lance Corners or families of business or mine or whatever, we could still come up with some some nice options.
I know the one year we did it, we contacted um Zippo and Case and they each gave us something from.
Yeah, I I I I gift cards. Uh, uh, the one thing that I'd like to stay away from is the one year we were in Borri or Countersport. Uh, we we got some gift cards for a local pizza shop or something. I'm not gonna drive back to Countersport for a pizza. Uh, if we're gonna do something like that, it's gotta be something like it's redeemable anywhere or cheap. But anyway, they, how about if you, how about if you, we set up a.
Another committee. I agree. We should have a Gwapik committee with.
What day is it?
February twenty second, so we have time. Thursday. We definitely, especially if we're gonna solicit Zippo and and organizations like that.
But as far as the groundwork that I laid, I mean, if 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 no, nobody, or somebody doesn't wanna do it or wants it somewhere else, then then we we need to move on that. The only other thing I would ask is that if we do go ahead with Martin Causer, that we include uh paying for uh him and a guest, a plus one for their dinner.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, so we'll put together a committee for that. Chuck, are you willing to be on it?
Yeah.
Just much? And um I won't take up time here. Robin may wanna be a part of it. She's not here, so I won't finalize the committee tonight.
Okay.
But I'll reach out to people and um see if we can get that together and save for your sister city if you wanna try to do a committee there.
Okay.
All right, um, public response.
I have one.
Okay.
Chuck violated Sunshine Act by discussing a problem with being the employees in public. I'm allotted the same privacy as an employee is. Number two, Chuck must lie during his presentations of what's going on with the employees because I've never heard that there was a problem. Everything is always fine and dandy, so why was nothing ever said?
I chose to talk to him about it and and tell him that I've.
But you chose not to talk to me.
No, no, that 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 would be futile.
Oh, okay.
That was.
But you did violate the Sunshine Act.
Good deal, good deal.
That's fine.
Yeah, I did violate.
You have to say, sir?
Yes, sir.
Jackson, go ahead.
Uh, sorry for uh interrupting, but.
That's okay.
The the only thing uh I was uh just curious on, uh, small ignorance on my part, is what does the M C Wapik stand for?
McKean, Warren, Potter County, or no, McKean, Warren, Elk, Cameron. I'm missing one. Warren.
Warren.
Warren County. It's a regional rural council.
The boroughs from those areas.
We we meet not quite quarterly with uh re- elected and appointed representatives from several communities uh.
Across all those counties.
Across all those counties and and we discuss mutual interests. And we usually have a a guest speaker that hopefully will enlighten us on something that's of interest to everybody. And sometimes it's informative and sometimes it's just a place to.
The goal is to share information and and resources and and try and help our daybreak.
Thank you.
Just throw a little light on the McWakup. The first time I went to a McWakup dinner, I came home with a door prize and I told Becky, I was all excited. I got this door prize. And later I found out everybody got a door prize.
You're still, you're still special, Will. Don't worry.
Sometimes everybody gets one, the last, the last one who was run hosted, everybody got something.
All right, anything else from the public? Yes, Kelly.
Um, the sister city, you said that's through the governing board. It's not like a five oh one C three, but I know sometimes it goes one way or the other.
It's, it's, from what I gather and from what I've read, it would be a a governing body. So in this case, it would come from the mayor and the council president.
Um, I'm excited about that for the library, um, so thanks for the information. Um, McWapik, I believe that we have lots of organizations in town that would probably put a basket in or something to help.
We talked about that, getting the Swedish Festival ordinance and things like that, just representing our community. So that's what the committee will reach out to everybody and probably bug you at the library.
It's a good idea.
Uh, anything else? Motion to adjourn?